Call to order. The regular meeting of the City Dickinson's Commission of Tuesday, March 17th, 2020. Let the record show that all Commissioners are present. Mr. Gah, are there any changes to the order of business?
Thank you, President Decker. There are some changes. Since the first draft agenda came out for this meeting, there have been several changes in our world we live in in regards to public meetings. So a few things were removed from the agenda, two public hearings and the swearing-in of officers to kind of decrease the impact of people that would attend the meeting, to keep the group size minimal. And then also, one addition we'd like to add under Administration Reports, we'll add a second report on just coronavirus response strategy update.
Thank you, Mr. Gah. Any questions for Mr. Gah on the amended order of business? Now I'd look for a motion on the amended order of business.
Move to approve, Mr. President.
We have a motion to approve?
Second.
With a second. Any further questions, comments? All in favor of the amended order of business, state aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Commissioners, are there any items on the consent agenda you wish to discuss? Now I'd look for a motion on the consent agenda.
Move to approve.
We have a motion to approve?
Second.
With a second. Any further discussion, questions on the consent agenda? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and vote. Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Mrs. Trustum?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. We'll move into our non timetable agenda. We do have one item on the timetable this evening at 5:00, but we'll get started on this. First item up is our monthly financial report, and that'll be Accountant Maury. Good evening.
Thank you, President Decker, and Commissioners. This financial report will be for the month ending February 2020. And starting off with our treasures report. As we usually talk about, this is our net working cash that we show you each month. And to end February, we're again consistently where we have been, just a little bit higher than where we did end at our year-end 2019 report. So we're finishing around 66 million for our net working cash. Investments you'll see are just a little bit higher than where they were as year-end 2019. The reason for that, we did make our pension contributions in January of 2020. So that's why those numbers have changed just a little bit. And we're right around 37.9 million at the end of February for our investments. Through the first two months with our 1% sales tax, you can see the red line is where we're starting off in 2020. So we're just a little bit higher in 2020 compared to where we were in 2019. In February 2020, we were 4.2% higher, about $25,000 higher. And then with the first two months combined, we're about 9% higher with about a $98,000 increase as compared to the prior year. As we always mention, this half percent sales tax slide, this is to show the public that we do record the dollars separately. We have our 1% sales tax fund and our half percent sales tax fund. Even though we collected a month's sum, we separate it out on our books. Our hospitality tax collections for the first two months have also been a little bit higher on the red line, as you can see. February as compared to the prior year is 4.8% higher, about a $4,000 increase. The two-month total, we're about $5,000 higher, which is a 3.2% increase over the prior Our occupancy tax collections, which again, as a reminder to the public, we take out a half of 1% of an admin fee, and the rest of these dollars is paid directly to the Dickinson Convention and Visitors Bureau. So as you can see, our January collection was just a little bit lower, about $600 lower, but we did go a little bit higher in February as compared to February of 19, about a $3,000 increase there. Through our first two months, we're 5.8% higher, about $2,500 with our two-month comparison. In our oil impact fund, you can see we have a fairly significant increase over January and February of 2019. We're actually about $280,000 higher in February of 2020 as compared to where we were in February of 2019. Over the first two months, we actually have, it comes out to an 18.2% increase, about $370,000 higher overall. And this final slide here is the snapshot from your packet that we always like to include, just to show where we're at with our accounts receivable and accounts payable balances. So with that, if you have any questions, I'll do my best to answer them, and city staff recommends approval.
Any questions for Mr. Maury? Hearing no questions, I'd look for a motion on the monthly financial report.
Mr. President, I'm going to approve.
We have a motion to approve?
Second.
With a second. Any further discussion, questions for Mr. Maury or staff on the monthly financial report? Hearing none, we'll vote. Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Mrs. Trustum?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next report will be the 2018 audit report, and that'll be handled by Deputy City Administrator Carlson.
Thank you, President Decker, and Commissioners. I'd like to report that you received your books of the 2018 audit. It was started in July 15 of 2019, and it was finished as February 27 of 2020. So with that, we are caught up now with all of our audits. And the only thing that I wanted to state on the 2018, we did not have any what is called the A133 audit, which is on our grants, because we did not qualify for the over $750,000 expenditure. So I didn't know if you noticed that or not, but you did not get a report on that, is because we did not have any expenditures on that. Our grants are reviewed anyway through the audit, and then they came out as good as could be. On the end of the audit is what is called our financial statement findings. And just to report so that everybody understands, the first finding was a material weakness, and what that was is concerning the transactions and the control. And this has been the same finding that we've had for the last four audits that I've had. And we did rectify this in 2019 when the Commission approved another financial person. We just did not have the separation down there to do the transactions and stuff, and that has been resolved. So I feel that in the next year, this one will also follow off like the other two did. And then the other statement finding, the preparation of financial statements, that will always probably be on this finding. We don't have the staff to be able to put together a financial report, so the auditors do have to report that they are putting our books of financial statements together. We do provide all the data to them, but they do put all the notes and information together. And so that is why that finding is there. Other than that, there was the letter that you received to the Commissioners and to the City Administrator concerning what the adjusting journal entries were. And I just wanted to report on that, that as of 2017 audit to 2018 audit, we dropped 12 adjusting journal entries, which is very good in the financial world that you don't having that many adjusting journal entries from your auditors. So I was very proud of the financial staff for what they did. And if you have any other questions concerning the audit, I would be glad to help you with that.
Any questions for Mrs. Carlson? I don't have a question, just a comment, I think you guys do an excellent job.
Agreed.
Keep at it. I wasn't expecting anything bad to come out, so I would have been surprised.
It's nice to see us caught up finally.
Yes.
Okay, any other comments for Mrs. Carlson? Hearing none, we'll move right into engineering. Oh, you wanted to add, Mr. Gah, you wanted to add another report.
Yes.
Yes, before we go to engineering, you wanted to add a report.
Yes, thank you, President Decker, and Commissioners. It doesn't have to be said, but I'll say it anyway, we're in very different times dealing with the coronavirus. And I just wanted to update you a little bit, and then just before I start this, this is fast-moving enough that probably by the time I give you this update, something on it is going to change. That's how quick this is moving in our nation. So last week, we had arranged a meeting with Southwest staff, Southwest District Health staff and Emergency Management. We had done that in advance, about a week ahead of time, knowing this was coming up and things were happening then. At that time, we decided that we would have a weekly status call with them each Wednesday morning to go over things. We've pretty much been in constant contact with them in the whole week since then. That's what's happened. So we will have our call tomorrow, and then we're also updating our leadership staff and all of our staff on some things. But we've just really been trying to react accordingly and move ahead. Really, our challenge here is, one, to keep city staff safe and able to work and maintain services. That's really the critical thing for us. So we've had a lot of discussion about strategies and protocol as far as the possibility of sick employees, the possibility of the virus affecting our operations, and really how to maintain a health, safety, work environment as well. While there's some things we're going to have to keep doing, we have to keep the water distribution and the wastewater collection, garbage collection. We have to respond to police emergencies and fire emergencies. So there's a lot of stuff that we have to keep our staff healthy for to respond to the community. Once the school closing announcement was made by the governor, we decided that facilities that might attract children, when school's out, like the library and the museum, were closed and will remain closed as long as schools are closed. The Parks and Rec District also made a similar decision with their facilities. And really, we're just trying to keep up with state and federal guidelines as we move along. This is going to continue to change. I think you'll see more restrictions as far as meetings, facilities. At some point in time, we may have to go to, city employees are working, but access to facilities is somewhat restricted and appointment only. You're seeing a lot of that happen in other states and other cities. That's something we'll keep working on. This is an emergency situation, and we'll continue to work as so. And I think it will continue to see worsen a little bit before it starts to improve. But I do believe there's hope that at some point in time, things do turn around. We're seeing that in other countries. It's just a fairly devastating time for a matter of weeks. We'll likely be adjusting public meeting schedules. And really, this is a real tough situation for us. We live in such a transparent world. We want to have open meetings. We want to have meetings with as many people as can be there, and that's changing. So we'll have to change some protocol. We're going to find some alternative meeting structures. And this is really going to challenge local entities to continue to be transparent and serve their citizens. But we're committed, the city staff, the exec staff, we've been having constant communication, somewhat jokingly, somewhat not. It's really inundated a lot of our time. And we're going to keep doing that to serve the public and our employees. And we just encourage everyone, again, trying to avoid large groups, minimize travel, stay at home, especially if you're sick. Something I was always taught growing up, but wash those hands. But that's become really, really important. Who would have thought that we'd hear that every day, several times a day? So just wanted to update you on that and the community that we're taking this very seriously, but we're trying to be as calm as possible and accommodating to our staff, our citizens, and our local businesses.
Have you eliminated weekly staff meetings?
We have not. What we're doing now is we are having a small staff meeting in the morning. Our executive team is rather small. Our leadership team is rather large. So we're going to have a conference call with our exec team in one room, and then we're going to have a larger discussion with the leadership team on the phone. We are starting to implement some strategies as far as how to maybe have different administrators in different facilities with backup plans, so that if somebody here got sick, can somebody else pick up the duties in another building or vice versa? So we have lots of game plans. A lot of it depends on what shoe drops, quite frankly.
And the public should know that their safety, and when I say their, I mean the citizens and our employees, is priority number one. I was receiving calls last week, you know, people, not hysterical, but saying, "You need to hold the town hall meeting so we can get some questions answered." And I said, "Do you really think that's prudent?" And this was before we even got to this level. So just remember, we are working. As announcements come out, we will make the statements through social media, on the news, through the newspaper, through TV. But keeping the city running and everybody's safety is priority number one.
Anything else, Mr. Gah?
That's it, thank you.
Have we started estimating anything with our budget? I would guess our revenues are going to be off over the next 60 days, probably.
You know, we haven't gotten into those projections, but that's something that definitely is going to be, the business community, this is greatly impacting the business community and will continue to do so. It will likely change the outlook quite a little bit, but at this point in time, everything would be speculation.
Mr. President?
Mr. Kubis.
Sorry. Could I ask Mr. Gah, maybe for the public, reiterate where they can look to for updates? Like I said, we have been meeting, you know, more than regularly to discuss these things. I know people are looking for updates from the city, and so if you could just reiterate those locations they can look to for updates.
You know, last Friday, we provided a fairly brief statement through our website and social media. There was an interview with the Dickinson Press yesterday, and then they had a nice story. We will continue to utilize those outlets. Very likely, Friday, we will issue another statement. I'm very hesitant to say the frequency, because quite frankly, as far as staff and internal stuff, it's becoming daily, and I think the external announcements will also become fairly similar. But yes, our Facebook page, the city has a Facebook page, several departments have Facebook pages that tie with that. So that's been our number-one source, and we've seen lots of comments, and we know we get lots of attention there, and we appreciate that.
Anyone else? Okay, we'll move into engineering. Mr. Kubis?
Thank you, Mr. President. We just have a few items to go through. The first one is special assessment resolution. Sorry, I don't have the agenda right. In front of me, I have my memo, but I believe this is the second reading of this, first reading? Okay. So this is a resolution for a special assessment policy for private property owners, mostly homeowners, to special assess the costs of their service line repairs. In the past, we've had quite a few sewer service line, either it's a collapsed sewer or somehow damaged sewer line, where the homeowner is responsible to pay for that repair all the way from their home, or in their home, out to the city main. In the past, the city has stepped up to help out homeowners who have had some damage to their home. We no longer do that. We don't have that fund available to us. So this would be some assistance to a homeowner who has to pay for a repair to a sewer service line, and it would only cover the costs that are in the city right away. So from the property line out to the city main, any work that would have to be done could be funded by the city and paid back to the city by the landowner via special assessment. I guess with that, I'd open it up to any questions you'd have.
So you're saying from the main, in the middle of the street, to the property line of the homeowner, that's the part that we want to let them special assess?
Correct. I just, I don't feel...
Not from the main all the way up to the house?
Correct. And I mean, it's open for discussion. It's typically not a policy that a city would special assess or allow special assessments for something off of the city right away.
How many of those do we get a year?
You know, a lot of them don't come forward to us because we haven't really been involved in the process, but we do get involved when they tear up the street, need to close the street down. I would say it's just a handful, Commissioner Steiner, but I don't have a number on that, really.
I like the idea, because, you know, it can get pretty expensive for some homeowners. Put it over a five- or 10-year term is what you're looking for?
You know, we probably haven't drilled down into that detail. I think the policy that we've used for the concrete assessments that we talked about, you know, 10-year assessment.
And this is just an option for them?
Certainly, yeah.
I mean, if they ultimately, if they want to fund it all themselves, I mean, if it's just another tool for them, if we decide, much like the curb and gutter 1% over, help me out here, Mrs. Carlson, we were 1% over the...
T-bill.
It was 1.5% over the...
A 1.5, okay. We could set that policy on this, 1.5% over 10 years.
It's not much anymore.
Yeah, it's pretty low now, right now. It could be 1.5% total.
President Decker?
Yeah, for me, this resolution does not specify sewer, but in our city codes, the water line from the main to the curb stop is responsibility of the, just to let the public know, is responsibility of the city. And normally, the curb stop is on property. So with that, then it probably only refers to the wastewater line from the property line to the main. I just wanted to bring that up.
Well, this is a resolution, so, I mean, there is no public hearing on resolutions, so.
President...
We just have to, we need to determine if that's, we're going to conduct this at the same, the same way, if we're just going to go 1.5% over the T-bill, 10 years. Do we want to consider a floor? I mean, right now, that would be like 2%, 2.3% roughly.
Again, completely up to you. We've heard some feedback, why even a percent and a half over that baseline? So, you know, there's some pushback as to why, is there any interest at all on special assessments? That's just comments I've heard, so.
Yeah, I mean, the only thing is, at some point, we probably, if we get a lot of assessments, we're going to have to borrow money to pay for them. Well, we're not going to borrow money yet. And lose, and lose money. I mean, we're not going to borrow money at 2%. And then to give it to them for 2.3%, that's my question. We've got some money put away right now, but at some point, that pot will go away.
Yeah, I don't have an answer for you, Commissioner Frederick. I think it's good policy to have that floor. Obviously, a lot of things have happened in the last week that we just didn't think would happen. When we went into the concrete assessment, before we sent out landowners, I consulted with Attorney Wanko, we felt it was prudent to set that rate. We had the policy set at 1.5% over the 10-year T-bill. People want to know, well, what is that? So the day we sent letters out, we took that, it was 1.9%. We said, "Your interest rate will be for that concrete assessment, 3.4." Sounded like heck of a rate a month ago. Now 3.4, you know, if we would implement this today, it would be...
That's under 2%.
I think it's under a percent right now, the 10-year T-note.
Yeah, it'd be like 2.3%.
Yeah.
2.4%.
So, you know, I guess our floor is set in the fact that we're going to adjust this every time we do an assessment at some point, you know? So it's going to vary every year. We're not going to lock ourselves into something too low or lock a homeowner into something too high. I would like to think that it's going to be, you know, a fair rate, so it flows with that T-note. If you'd like to set a floor, we absolutely can put that in.
My only concern is if we have to borrow money to fund these specials down the road. That's my only concern. As of right now, we don't. That's probably not going to be the case, but we're not going to borrow money at under 3%, I would guess, if we need to.
We've done this before. I believe we established a ceiling that the city could handle the program at a certain amount of dollars. So you wouldn't get into this situation like if you had 100 and all of a sudden go or something like that.
That was the impact fees, though, but I mean, if we're going to special every future project, if that's our new policy, that we're not going to, we're probably not going to have an ending amount like the impact fee program did.
Well, that had a cap, and I think the program Commissioner Steiner might be referring to was that sewer backup fund? And that was capped at $10,000 per request, right?
Per loss, yeah.
Yeah, incident, yeah.
And we could do the same thing here. We could special assess it up to an amount, kind of get an average cost of what these types of repairs would be, and cap that.
Mr. Kubis, we had it capped at 10,000 per loss, not to exceed X amount of dollars total. Okay, so if you had...
Right.
I think it was maybe a couple hundred thousand, which, we had two numbers in there, not to exceed 10,000 per homeowner and the total program at quarter of a million or whatever.
You're correct, because there was a dedicated fund, the sewer backup fund, that we weren't going to exceed that total fund, that's correct.
Well, looking back, we've got about 4 million, I think, in our impact fee fund. I imagine that's how we're going to fund that, this for now?
I believe that's what we were looking at. We haven't made any decisions on it at all.
But this is going to be a small number, anyway. I mean, this right here. This portion will be, but I'm just saying that all the specials, if we start doing the sidewalk program, I mean, that fund could go away in two to three years and fairly quickly. And if we put it on a 10-year repayback, I mean, you're going to pay out a lot upfront, and you're not going to get it back very fast, so if we have to borrow or take a bond out to finance this, I don't think we're going to borrow at 2%.
So should we come back with a little more detail in here on fund sources and floors or ceilings, things like that?
I mean, I think we should talk about it.
Yeah, I think that would be helpful. So, yeah, can I get a motion to table this?
For move.
Second.
We have a motion to table this resolution. Motion to table by Mr. Steiner, with a second by Mr. Frederick. All in favor of tabling this to the next meeting, state aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Mr. Kubis, you have a kind of a concurrence for us with consideration to approve some changes to the I-94 East business loop design.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. So this project is the I-94 East Business Loop from 10th Avenue East, east to essentially city limits, to the interstate. The project was initiated in consultation with the city and DOT many years ago, I want to say 2015. At the time, the city, we started the project, the city asked for more amenities, I'll call it. So the project was put on hold to budget those amenities into the project. And just recently, in the last year or so, the DOT's really ramped up again and it started, restarted design on the project. So the DOT has a very formal process for making their design decisions on projects like this. And since the city has some funding in the project, they asked for the city to concur on some of those design decisions originally. This probably goes back to 2016. So city administration at the time had made some decisions that now, as they're designing it, doesn't look like one will either work or the expense is much greater than was anticipated originally. So since the city had originally weighed in on some of these design decisions, they're asking for the city to concur or change their decision. And I'll go through, there's really three things that have changed. Two of them that they're asking for design consideration or concurrence. The big one that, you know, has been kind of in the spotlight over the years is the improvement at 10th Avenue East, and that was originally requested by the city administration to be a roundabout. As they've laid this out and are really trying to fit it in, it's literally trying to fit a round roundabout in a square box. And they're having a really difficult time with it. There's some grade considerations that are making it more challenging than they thought... grade considerations that are making it more challenging than they thought it would be originally. Cost-wise, it, it's more expensive than what a signal would be, but they're asking for the, the city to either concur or not concur with changing that design to a signal. I've talked to city leaders about this. I, I believe it, it would be a fine improvement to just install, I say just, but installing a signal. It, it seems like a less improvement just because it's smaller by footprint, but I believe it to be an adequate improvement. One, a long time coming for that intersection as well, so. I, I don't know if there's a, a formal way. We need to make these, um, design decisions. In, in the document, the document the DOT puts, puts together, someone actually signs the, the design decision.
Well, I think what we'll do is we'll just take each item. Mr. Kubis, have the discussion between commissioners. I, I tend to agree with Mr. Kubis on the challenges there to a roundabout, just spacing-wise, um, and overall, just putting lights in there will be a vast improvement to what we have currently. I, I always thought there would be a challenge there with a roundabout.
That, I, I agree. It seemed like, I, I think, I don't want to put words in people's mouths from four or five years ago, but it seemed like a nice segue traffic-wise into the urbanized portion of Dickinson, coming from the roundabout into Villard. So it, it made some sense, but it, it's proving to be a real challenge for the, for the design team on this one, so.
So how would they handle East, the East Villard? I mean, because it's not a, you know, it's not a standard intersection, it's like...
It's certainly the farthest thing from it. So either, either way, with the signal or the roundabout, East Villard needs to loop down to the south a little bit to try and come into that intersection more squarely. And I apologize, their consultant was going to come to this meeting from Salt Lake City. They, you know, they, they didn't come to the meeting, and they had some exhibits that, that we could have shared with you had they been here, but. So, so the, East Villard does need to dip down to the south and get squared up with, with 10th Avenue East, really. It's just an easier realignment to do, coming into a signal. When you have to come in and kind of keep moving to, to take a right-hand turn, it's, it's, it's a real awkward movement, you know, just on paper. I think it would be even more awkward when you're driving a semi truck, coming up down East Villard and turning back almost 180 degrees back to the East Business Loop, so. The, the alignment, it, it doesn't change between the two. It's just a much smaller footprint with the signal. And I think everyone's just a little more comfortable coming into that stop sign, or that, in this case, a traffic signal, stopping, okay, kind of see what the traffic's doing, and then you make your left or your right movement from there.
So any other concerns, commissioners, on this traffic light? Okay, Mr. Kubis, seeing there's no concerns, I think we can concur that traffic light will probably be appropriate.
Okay.
Next, the next item would be the 18th Avenue East intersection.
So the 18th Avenue East intersection, similar to what, as they happened at, at Sims and Villard, they've recounted, recounted the traffic there. It no longer warrants a signal. They're not asking for a decision by, by this commission. They're just kind of updating us that there, originally, there was a signal to go in there, and at this time, it doesn't warrant a signal.
There would be a turn lane, right?
There would be turn lanes.
Because that's where the backups happen, is.
Yep.
They're trying to turn left onto 18th.
Most of the major intersections, Energy Drive, 25th Avenue East, 18th Avenue East, probably missing another one, but they will have turn lanes, that, those major intersections.
That'll solve that problem.
Though, the only question I would have is on that intersection, if the electric, you know, the plumbing can be put in, if it warrants a light in the future.
So to, to put in conduit for a future signal?
Right.
I think that's something we can work with the design team.
Right. And that way, if we're not digging something up down the road, once we put in a brand-new road, if it warrants a light.
The, the cost is minimal, and we certainly don't want to disrupt traffic
Right.
Much in the future, so that, we'll, we'll certainly note that to the design team.
Okay.
The, the last decision, and I apologize, the memos is probably, as I reread it, probably misleading. So there is going to be a shared use trail on the project, on the north side of the business loop, running basically the entire way from, from Dakota Diner, Tiger Discount, all the way to 10th Avenue East. The, the question, or the decision the city had made was, hey, let's put this away from the road and keep it back, make it more, have a trail-type feel to it. As they got into the design further, there are a lot of utilities out there. Not our utilities, MDU, Consolidated, things like that. Very expensive utility moves to the tune of like a million dollars more to put this trail away from the road. So what they're asking is, would the city be okay with leaving this trail, call it street-side, but it would have a large boulevard, if you think of how 30th Avenue is out by Menards, that concrete trail out there? It's about 10 or 11 feet off of the curb. So there's, to me, a, a safe buffer between pedestrians walking and, and traffic moving, uh, vehicles moving.
And more importantly, for snowies or snow to push off the trail. Sorry, Jerry.
And, and it does two things. It gives us room to move snow off the roadway, and if we put it right on the property line, a lot of those adjacent property owners push snow off their lots into the right of way, and we, we, either we or, or the private landowners would then be plugging up the, the, the trail with snow in the winter. So I think this is a, a really good option as well.
Any concern with going with alignment B?
No.
I think it's cost savings. I think it's more efficient use of that land out there, and ultimately, a lot less digging, which we know can lead to other issues, so. Well, that being said, thank you, Mr. Kubis. Anyone have objection with approving this concurrence? Then I guess there would be, then Mr. Kubis could forward this concurrence to them.
I, I will do that. There may be a document.
Right, and then I'll sign it, yeah. Any, anyone?
Would have a motion?
Yeah.
I'd make a motion to approve the...
We have a motion by Commissioner Frederick to approve the design concurrence.
Second.
With a second by Commissioner Trustum. Any further discussion, questions? Hearing none will vote. Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Mrs. Trustum?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. Mr. Kubis, we'll put you on hold right now. Our 5 o'clock timetable.
President Decker, just to clarify, that was the public hearings.
Okay.
We have taken those off. The next timetable would be the, the city attorney presentation.
Okay, it's 5:15.
Set for 5:15.
So we got a little bit of time.
Have a little.
Okay. We didn't adjust that on the heading, so, okay. I guess you have one more item. Mr. Kubis?
It is, and this is a design, or a bid concurrence for a project bid by the DOT just a couple Fridays ago. Just so the public knows, as a reminder, we have the DOT project going to be built this summer in Dickinson. It's a bridge over the interstate at exit 59, called the Menards Interchange. And along with that, there'll be a trail going south from that bridge to 8th Street, so by the Sanford Clinic. New policy at the DOT is that we had to bid an alternate surfacing with asphalt or concrete. My feeling is that we, this should be a concrete trail. The difference for that concrete trail is 63,287. That's really, you know, what they're asking for the city to concur in the bid, is the addition for concrete. And these 10-foot-wide trails are very hard to maintain with asphalt. I, I pleaded with them to not have us even bid alternates, that concrete should be the surfacing material that we use here, but as it turns out, this is, is their policy. So I would recommend concurring with the bid with the addition of concrete for $63,000. I'd open it up for any questions right now.
Mr. Kubis, are these trails going to be straight, or?
This, this trail is fairly straight. It avoids some, some items out there. There's some manholes, there's some hydrants, there's some trees, so, and it avoids some topography, but for the most part, it's pushed away from, this one is pushed away from the, the roadway. Just because they're not building a new roadway, it's kind of tough to match something that they intend to probably reconstruct at some point in the future, so.
How far north does it go then?
It just goes over the interstate. It'll go, it'll basically tie in where the trail north of the interstate starts.
Okay.
And it ties in at Fairway, from Fairway to...
8th Street, actually.
8th, okay.
So, yeah. It'll go over Fairway or up, past Fairway, 8th Street.
Okay.
Okay.
I'd move to approve, Mr. President.
With the concrete?
With the concrete alternate, yeah.
Any, any concerns? Okay, we have a second. We have a motion to approve with concrete option by Commissioner Frederick. Commissioner Steiner seconded. Any other questions, comments? Hearing none will vote. Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mrs. Trustum?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. And the motion carries. We have about five minutes. We'll move into Public Works. Public Works directors are off. You have a urban forestry ordinance amendment.
Thank you, President Decker and Commission. First item is the urban forestry amendment to the ordinance. The previous ordinance didn't have any guidance as to the composition of the board, and our current forester, Mr. Quam, has put together what he thinks is the best way to move forward with the, a forestry board. And as you can see in your packet, it, the changes basically consist of the committee makeup of, of the members and the appointment terms of those members. I can go through them if you want me to, or I guess if you have any questions.
Commissioners, do you have any questions on this ordinance, or the, how the board is composed? This would be ordinance 1689.
Mr. President, move to approve ordinance 1689.
We have a motion to approve 1689 by Commissioner Trustum.
Second.
And a second by Commissioner Walla. Any further discussion, comments? And this is the, the first reading. We'll have the public hearing at the following meeting in April, so. There are no questions or comments. We'll go ahead and vote. Mrs. Trustum?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries.
Thank you, President Decker. The next item I have is the approval of a small change order on our lift station one project. It is for adding some concrete, a concrete flade to the bottom of, of a wet well. And the change, total change order amount for this change order two for the lift station project is $1,500. If you have any questions, I can sure answer. The next item, Mr. Schneider will be discussing that project and go through that project pretty indepthly also. So, as per our change order policy, city employees designated by department head can approve a change order less than 10,000. A department head may approve a change order if it results in a cost of less than 25,000 or 6% of the cost of that change order, that project. So I just want to inform to the board of, of what the current change order policy established by the board probably four or five years ago.
Okay, any questions for Mr. Zaroff on this change order? There are no questions or comments. I'd look for a motion to, for the consideration to approve the change order.
Move to approve.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Steiner.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Frederick. Thank you. Any further questions, comments? Hearing none will vote. Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Mrs. Trustum?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. We'll move into our public hearing at 5:15 for the city attorney presentation and the consideration to approve the contracts. And as we have it set up first, I'm going to massacre this name, but Maranosi? All right, all right. Maranosi Law Group. Welcome.
Thank you, President Decker, commissioners. We did put together a short slideshow, but I'm going to keep the presentation relatively brief so that there's plenty of time for questions, if you have any. As President Decker introduces, I am the managing partner for Maranosi Law Group, PC. On the next slide, we'll get into... Okay, so, Maranosi Law Group has offices in 15 states. We have 39 attorneys that have licenses in 20 different jurisdictions, 20 different states. Our Dickinson office, between Pete Morowski and I, we cover North Dakota, South Dakota, Montana, Wyoming, and Texas. The reason that our licensure in 20 states is important is that often, the city attorney is required to review contracts that have a choice of venue, choice of law clause in them. And while typically, we try to get those changed to North Dakota law and North Dakota courts, that isn't always possible when we have a vendor that won't negotiate that term and there aren't reasonable alternatives to using that particular vendor. So, the 20 states really does give us some great coverage in terms of when we have those contract issues. Our North Dakota attorneys and staff are all located in Dickinson. Right now, we have, we do have the capability of working remotely, so while some businesses are trying to figure out what to do with the current health crisis, all of our attorneys and staff in the Dickinson office are able to work remotely from home and have access to their files as if they were sitting at our office. So we do have some really good technology and technological capabilities that way to maintain business continuity. As our proposal stated, I would serve as the primary contact for city attorney. I was licensed in North Dakota in September of 2012. I served as the city attorney from June of 2017 until December of 2018, so between Jennifer Groth and Jan Murtha. And then I also served after Ms. Murtha stepped down in August of 2018 to December of 2019, when I left McAuliffe. While I was at McAuliffe, I did serve as assistant city prosecutor and assistant Golden Valley State's attorney, making a few court appearances on both of those, and on city prosecutor handling plea hearings about once a month for three years, for the three years in that time. And then I also served as the city attorney for the city of Richerton July 2015 to December 2019. The city of Richerton did not do city prosecuting, it was primarily a civil contract. Pete Morowski is the other attorney in our office. He would be your point person as city prosecutor. Of course, we both, we work closely together and we back each other up, but it's important to have designated people in designated positions so that there's a primary line if there's something that comes up. Pete has 10 years of experience. He was originally licensed in Texas in 2010. He and his wife and kids moved up here in 2013. And as far as his general practice areas, Pete has primarily been a litigator. He's a courtroom attorney. He has done 10 years of litigation. He's participated in trials, led trials, and so he's got a wealth of experience in the courtroom. He has also defended involuntary mental health commitments for the last two years, so again, familiar with a pretty unique subset of, of law there. In addition, he served as assistant city prosecutor during 2000, part of 2019. A brief summary of our contract. The contract covers both the city attorney and city prosecutor roles, and that is for $15,000 per month flat fee. There's no limit on the number of hours that Pete and I will work during a month, and we do have up to six office hours on-site, and that can be whether, we have it in the proposal, I think, squared out as two hours per day up to three days per week. And that can be either at city hall, we could be at Public Works, we could be at Public Safety for one, you know, each one of those days, just depending on what the city wants and how they want our time allocated for those office hours. Those office hours are in addition to normal meetings, so we're not including planning and zoning, board of adjustment, the leadership, executive... and zoning, board of adjustment, the leadership, executive meetings. Those are all outside of those six hours. So, and then we did double and triple check that our proposal covered everything that was in the RFP as far as the services that the city would want. And finally, just a brief comparison of the two bids. So for Marinosi Law Group, we have $15,000 per month, all-inclusive. McAuliffe's bid is $23,500. Annual cost is $180,000 for Marinosi Law Group or $282,000 for McAuliffe Kellogg. And we have six designated office hours on city sites, and the McAuliffe bid includes four. That is, and then I heard the question at the last meeting, why is their bid so low? And I've gotten a few questions about that from others as well. So just to kind of tackle that head on, our bid is low because we have economies of scale. The city is a strategic fit as a client, and ultimately, there's benefit to the taxpayers and the community that we live in. So to start, the economies of scale, as I said, we're in 15 different states. Our non-client facing functions such as human resources, finance, those are centralized and shared among all of those offices. So I don't have to pay a full-time person to do my HR or my, I don't have to pay a CFO for just our office. We share those functions, which allows some really great cost savings. In addition, because we do have such a wide network, some of our vendors, we're able to get some really competitive pricing, and so our supply costs can be lower. Our office does make a point of purchasing locally whenever possible. So we're lucky that a supplier moved in right next door to us, so we can just knock on their door and get whatever we need. So it's nice that way as well. And then as far as the strategic fit, the city of Dickinson allows us some really good strategic advantages. One is that all the work is in the city of Dickinson, and some of our other business lines that we want to pursue or are pursuing would require us to be in the city instead of traveling. And so having the city of Dickinson is a good strategic fit, which allows us to say, while the profit margin might be lower than, you know, we previously would have bid or would bid otherwise, because there's those strategic advantages, we're able to pass those cost savings along to the city. And finally, benefit to the community and taxpayers. We live here, we pay taxes here, so we're going to try and be as competitive as possible on our bid. And the reduced, we can't always do pro bono hours as attorneys just because of the press of business and maintaining a budget for your office, paying staff, bringing jobs to the community is really important to us. We have to maintain some kind of profit margin, but this is a significantly reduced fee from what we would be able to offer to others, but because it benefits the whole community, we think it's a good thing to do as a business, especially since Marinosi Law Group, you know, Pete and I have been in the community for a number of years, but Marinosi Law Group as a company is relatively new. And so as a way to kind of introduce ourselves, thought it was a good faith effort to bid as low as possible. And finally, it does give the city an opportunity with the upcoming legislative session to show some cost savings. I've been around, as we talked about with the interim times that I've served for almost collectively two years. I've watched the budget process, and I know that department heads have a lot of requests that they need to find ways to fund to meet the city's needs. It's not luxury requests, it's its needs. And you are in the unenviable position of trying to make that work within a budget. And so we did our best to sharpen our pencil, as Commissioner Steiner has said in the past, bring in a low bid and give you guys something to take to the legislature of, it's not as if this one contract is going to seal the deal on any oil impact funds or things you might be asking for, but it is a lot easier to show that you are shaving down costs on your side when you're going to the legislature asking for additional funds in future legislative sessions. At this point, I would yield for any questions.
Any questions for Ms. Kreip?
Mr. President?
Ms. Walla?
Haley, how many, or Ms. Kreip, sorry. How many staff, like your staff size? How many paralegals and everything like that do you have on staff?
Right now, we have two attorneys and two staff people working out of our office. One of our staff people primarily works in administrative role. Actually, she works for the headquarters, but because we have such a great technology infrastructure, it's one of the nice things we've been able to bring jobs to Dickinson that would otherwise be in other states, not even just other communities in North Dakota. And so, but we do, as a company, reallocate. So just in our office, there's those two sitting in Dickinson, but there's many more throughout our corporation that, that work on different things. So, and work for different offices as the need arises.
Any other questions? Ms. Kreip, can you break down how much prosecution experience you and your associate have?
Absolutely. So as I said in the presentation, after city prosecutor Eberts left, the firm, I subbed in as the, Christine Nowanko stepped up to the city prosecutor role, and then I stepped in as assistant city prosecutor. Once a month, the city court and the Golden Valley master calendar day are on the same Thursday, and so I would always, on those roles, I would step over and handle the plea hearings, have handled a couple of city trials. And then Mr. Morowski has served, I think, in a backup role as the city prosecutor as well, I think for a shorter period of time. It was after I kind of stepped back from that role when I stepped back into the city attorney role. And so he would have some experience with that. And then the involuntary mental health commitment proceedings are somewhat similar to a criminal proceeding. And then again, he also backed, I'm sorry, I also worked on the assistant Golden Valley State's Attorney.
Ms. Kreip, what is more demanding, city attorney or prosecution?
That's a good question. I think, to me, the city attorney role affects a greater subset of the population in that the things that I'm, as a city attorney, would advise on have effects on the contracts that the city enters into. There's employment matters that come up that affect city dollars. And the city prosecution contract, while very important, it's important to note that municipal prosecution only goes up to a Class B misdemeanor. And so your very serious crimes, such as murder, rape, things like that, are going to be handled at the district court level by the Stark County State's Attorney's Office. So the things that we're dealing with at the city prosecutor level are kind of the same handful of criminal offenses that we deal with routinely. And once you have gone through those a few times, you try and treat all the defendants fairly and equally while using your prosecutorial discretion to address the facts of each scenario. But I would say overall, the city attorney position has been more demanding.
Thank you.
Mr. President?
Ms. Trustum?
Ms. Kreip, you did not do, you did not provide a split bid for one contract versus the other. If the commission were to decide tonight that that would be an avenue they'd want to look at, is that something that MLG would be interested in, or is it strictly the both services bid?
We would always consider any opportunity with this, to work with the city. I don't know that the bid would change much from where it's at now. It would go down a little bit, but realistically, when you look at, from my perspective, if I represent the city as city attorney, I'm foregoing any line of business on the criminal defense side, and not just me, but also Mr. Morowski. And so we can't even, not that we would, you know, necessarily want to do even just municipal crimes, but we can't represent anyone in Stark County as a defense attorney because we would be potentially working against the officers who are employees of the city, and it's not an ethical position we would put ourselves in. The other, so essentially, by foregoing a line of business, we kind of have to make up for that on the contract price, so you're not going to see a huge decrease, whereas you kind of get, you sign us on for one, we definitely can't do another line of business, we're going to just do that work for the city, one for volume, and then because of the ethical conflicts of interest, preventing us from doing the other if we got only one.
Any other questions? Thank you. Ms. Winko?
Mr. President, Commissioners, first of all, I want to thank each and every one of you for taking the extra time to do extra due diligence on these contracts before rendering a decision. These contracts are about more than a bid number. They're about experience, qualifications, and competence. Of course, I understand that there's a financial component to these contracts. I represent a county, I represent other municipalities, so I understand that that isn't a concern. So when we ask why their bid is so low, I want to give you some facts as to what other comparable markets are paying for legal services comparable to the city of Dickinson. First of all, let's look at the city of Williston. They operate very much like the city of Dickinson. They contract with a local law firm consisting of four attorneys. They have three full-time staff, one part-time staff and a reception, receptionist. Every person in their law firm works on their city files. They contract with another attorney that handles their bonding work, and currently, they bid and they bill their city prosecution work by the hour. So on average, they're spending $17,000 to $18,000 a month just on their city prosecution work. In 2020, they budgeted $425,000 for legal services in the city of Williston. Now, we flip and we talk about the city of Minot. City of Minot takes a slightly different approach. They have two full-time in-house attorneys. The lead attorney, who is two years ahead of me in law school, gets paid $129,000. They got a second attorney coming in at $100,000. They actually contract with an outside lawyer that handles their city prosecution overflow for $72,000. They got one full-time paralegal, a part-time legal assistant, and the legal services budget excluding benefits is $380,000. So when you look at these two cities in western North Dakota and you compare them proportionally to the city of Dickinson, the city, McAuliffe Kellogg's bid of 282 is relatively in, proportionally in-market with what we're seeing for other cities and other comparable legal services. So this again is just a breakdown showing Williston, Minot, McAuliffe Kellogg's bid, and then of course, the other bidder. And you can see proportionately McAuliffe Kellogg's bid for comparable legal services is right in line with other cities and municipalities in western North Dakota dealing with oil country issues. I want to take a few moments to discuss our city attorney experience. I personally have served as your city attorney in two separate occasions, one in 2016 and currently, right now, I'm holding that position, obviously. Right now also, we currently serve four municipalities, serving as their city attorney. Myself, I represent city of Gladstone and city of Dunn Center. My associate, Ms. Krebs, represents the city of Richerton and the city of Taylor. I also serve as the Golden Valley County State's Attorney. I've held that position since 2016. Ms. Krebs is the assistant Golden Valley County State's Attorney, and she's held that position since 2017. We practice in the relevant areas of law. We're talking real property law, contract law. We are not a one-dimensional law firm. We can provide the legal services that the city requires. In addition to that, we represent multiple businesses, other public organizations in employment issues, HR issues, things that are going to be relevant to the city's legal representation. So the question was asked, which contract is more demanding? Well, I will tell you hands down, having done both, and having done both for quite a few years, the city prosecution contract is an entirely different animal than the city attorney contract. McAuliffe Kellogg has held that position since October of 2014. We've served in that role for six years. I previously served as the assistant city prosecutor from October of 14 to March of 2016. I took over the lead prosecutor role in March of 2016. Ms. Krebs, who is seated over, seated over to my right here, has served as the assistant city prosecutor since 2017. Attorney Fetch, who is another attorney in our office, brings prosecutorial experience having been the prosecutor for Devil's Lake from 2015 to 2017. As the city prosecutor since 2016, I have prosecuted almost 200, excuse me, 2,500 cases, not including contested traffic tickets. I have argued approximately 40 to 50 suppression motions. I have tried approximately 30 criminal and traffic cases in front of judges and juries, and I've appeared in front of the North Dakota Supreme Court twice on behalf of the city of Dickinson. In addition to that, we bring an extra level of experience to the city prosecution contract because, as a state's attorney, we deal with higher-level offenses. Some of the most notable cases that I have prosecuted as a state's attorney involve a homicide in 2016. I prosecuted a gross sexual imposition case in 2018, which ultimately went to a jury trial and we got a conviction. In 2018, I prosecuted a double-A felony for continuous sexual abuse of a child, resulting in a guilty verdict. Because of my work in that case, I've been a presenter with the Bureau of Criminal Investigation, giving presentations to local law enforcement about trial techniques and how that helps at trial. I've appeared, both myself and Ms. Krebs have appeared at the North Dakota Supreme Court twice. I've prosecuted approximately 14 felonies, 77 misdemeanors, and 20 to 30 juvenile cases as the state's attorney alone. There is a question that Ms. Commissioner Walla asked about support staff. We are able to do what we do because of our support staff, and that is one of the reasons why we are so successful at what we do. I have been a business owner and an attorney long enough to know, and this is especially true in the legal profession, you are only as good as the people that you surround yourself with. And I can proudly say that collectively, McAuliffe Kellogg brings 55 years of paralegal and legal assistant experience to these contracts. Right now, every single staff person in my office touches the city prosecution contract in some way, shape, or form, whether it's drafting pleadings, filing documents, assisting walk-in defendants, handling phone calls. Every single one of those ladies is involved. Darcy Turcot, who is my main legal assistant paralegal, has 21 years of experience, 15 in just the criminal defense and criminal prosecution areas alone. If she didn't drink a beer once in a while, I think she would probably be a robot. She is just that efficient at what she does, and she leads as by example for the other ladies in our office for what they do. Now, I want to, I want to say this for my staff because I feel it's important. These ladies are the best in the business, and I stake my professional reputation on that. Then just a couple extra things I'd like to discuss currently, and just talking about how we work and we interface with other jurisdictions and law enforcement agencies. I currently have, well, I have in the past been the special assistant state's attorney for Stark County for conflict cases. I've been appointed, and Ms. Krebs and Mr. Fetch have been appointed, the special assistant city prosecutor for the city of Williston. Myself and Ms. Krebs have appeared at various hearings on behalf of the city of Bellfield for the attorney Sandy Koontz. Right now, we are currently working with SEJIS, which is the Criminal Justice Information System, which will allow McAuliffe Kellogg to interface with the Dickinson Case Management System with the DPD, which allows access for ease of information. And one of the most important things that I have stressed since I have taken this position, we want to be available for the DPD. We want to be able to answer their questions. We want to be available if they need a warrant in the all-hours of the night. That is so extremely important for the services that we provide as the city prosecutor. So in conclusion, I would just like to say this. As a young attorney starting out eight years ago, my mentor Chuck Peterson gave me the best advice that he could ever give a young attorney starting out. He said, "Work hard, let your work speak for itself, and then it doesn't matter who you know, it's what you can do." And I bid these contracts based on my record, my team's record, and the relationships that we have built with the Dickinson Police Department and various city court staff, et cetera. The Dickinson prosecution contract has run like a well-oiled machine for the last six years. No disruptions, no complaints, except solid teamwork with the DPD, court staff, and the judges. Where on the other side, the city attorney position has been the model of inconsistency. And whenever the city needed legal services, McAuliffe Kellogg stepped in and they provided those services without hesitation, without question. So McAuliffe Kellogg has been serving this community, and it's served this community for 130 years. And I'm honored and I'm humbled to continue to carry on that legacy, and we will continue to provide exceptional legal services for, as a locally-owned law firm. And I fully stand behind McAuliffe Kellogg's bid because it's appropriate, it's in-market, and it's responsible. And so I would stand for any questions that any of you have.
Thank you, Ms. Winko. Any questions for Mrs. Winko?
Any questions for Mrs. Winko? No questions for Mrs. Winko? Thank you.
Thank you.
I know this is a tough decision. I tend to think, no matter who we choose, we have to look at stability in, in our community. And, and hopefully, this agreement will provide at least two years of stability, because I think both contracts are for two years, if I'm correct. Where I'm challenged is when it, when it does come down to one of our most important departments and the public safety is that prosecution. Not that the city attorney is the least important, it's just that for me, right now, making sure that everything is done correctly on the prosecution side, I tend to lean that way. And I guess if I have any concerns with Mrs. Kreip's law group, it would just be on the prosecution side. I know she's more than capable as a city attorney, so, but that's my opinion.
Mr. President, I would echo those comments, I think. I had a lot of community input, especially after the press article that covered our last meeting, and, you know, it seems like, for the most part, you know, there's a consensus that the prosecution has, has been very stable, and the police department is very comfortable proceeding with McAuliffe. I think the question that we need to ask ourselves is, you know, do we look at moving forward with one firm? And if so, you know, how do we answer that question to the community? And, or do we look at potentially splitting these services between the two as they both have an ample amount of experience in their kind of respective roles? Attorney Winko with prosecution and Ms. Kreip with the city of Dickinson. You know, I'd like to hear what you guys have to say, but, you know, that doesn't really, even with the reduced negotiation with MLG, it really doesn't change. It's still above what McAuliffe's bid is, but under what is budgeted for. And when we talked about responsible bids and making fiscally responsible decisions, you know, I don't know that, that that does that, answers that question either by splitting those contracts.
Well, and, and to your question earlier, in Mrs. Kreip, or Ms. Kreip's answer, there won't be that big a difference, so.
Well, it would put us at three hundred and thirty thousand a year if I just put a fourteen thousand, I did a thousand-dollar reduction a month, just as an estimate, and we have budgeted three hundred and twenty-four thousand. Is that correct? I just referred to my notes from before, so, again, I mean, that's well above the bid that came in from both firms.
Any other commissioners have any comments?
I just have a short one. I mean, we faced this issue not so many months ago when we lost Ms. Murtha, and at that time, we had two bids, two firms that were capable, but one firm that had zero experience working as a city attorney for us. And in that case, we decided to pay a little more for the experience, and we stayed with Ms. Kreip and McAuliffe. In this situation, I'm in the same boat. I feel both of them are plenty qualified for the city attorney side, but I feel McAuliffe is over and above on the prosecution side, just with the years of experience that they have. So, to switch the whole thing and start and change is, is a tough decision, and it's hard for me to make that decision because of money.
Anyone else?
Are we looking at me? I would have to just agree with what Jason just said, and plus, if you look at what the cost is, because I'm kind of a math nerd, and break it down, if you break it down, so, McAuliffe's offering seven employees, which averages out to thirty-three fifty-seven, with four attorneys at fifteen, that equals thirty-seven fifty, so really, there, when you break down the person that you get for the money, McAuliffe comes in cheaper. But they do have the prosecution experience that I have heard from numerous people is very important to them.
Mr. President, yeah, I've been thinking about this, and, you know, in a, in a perfect world, I, I think I would say, let's reject both bids, because everybody up here's talked about this firm does good on this and this firm does good on this, and I'm thinking, why not take one from each firm? Why not take Ms. Kreip and put her as city attorney for a hundred thousand, and McAuliffe Kellogg with Ms. Winkle, the city prosecutor, for a hundred and twenty thousand, or whatever those numbers be? Now, the city has pretty responsible numbers there, said that both people are qualified for those positions. However, I, I like the idea of the right hand knowing what the left hand is doing, you know? And just to cut it short, at this time, I, I would vote to approve Ms. Winkle's offer.
Any further discussion before I ask for a motion? Because it seems we have one. Any further? I know this is a challenge, commissioners, because, I mean, we have worked with both attorneys for a long period of time and developed relationships, but sometimes the steady ship is what is needed, so.
I mean, as, as, as a commissioner, I mean, are we going to look to hire an in-house attorney again? Is that going to be our plan for the future?
We have this one for two years, and I think what we can do then is have that discussion down the road. I mean, Mrs. Winko kind of laid out what Minot's paying for their attorneys, so, and their, their market is probably pretty comparable to ours. I, I mean, I wouldn't say it's far off. They probably can get somebody a little bit cheaper than we can out here, but I don't know.
The only difference with that is we get them eight hours a day.
Right.
In-house.
Well, that's why I made that comment last meeting. I, I'm still, I would still prefer having our own in-house counsel, but, that being said, we have these two bids in front of us, and that's something for us to discuss during the budget season. As it rolls around for next year, we have this. If we're going to pursue that, that would give us time, at least two years.
Get to through the next biennium with the legislature also.
And, and there's some uncertainty right now. I mean, you, you think about how much the stock market has gone down and how much that's going to affect what, how the state's going to react to oil money. So, we're, we'll have to wait till budget season, but right now, I mean, I'm, you know...
What are we paying month to month, right now?
Our annual budget for twenty is three hundred and twenty-four thousand, and...
So, this is forty-two thousand less. The high bid is forty-two thousand less.
Correct. McAuliffe is forty-two thousand less.
Than, than what we're paying right currently, month to month?
Any other comments, questions? Thought I'd look for a motion.
Mr. President, will we approve the contract of McAuliffe Kellogg Law Firm?
We have a motion to select McAuliffe Kellogg Law Firm by Commissioner Steiner.
Second?
Second by Commissioner Frederick. Any further discussion, comments, questions? Your name on the vote. Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Mrs. Trustum?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Your attorney contract has, motion has, for selection has been approved. We'll go back into, what do we have here? We have a lift station update, and that'll be provided by Engineer Scott Schneider. Evening.
Good evening. Good evening, President Decker and commissioners. So, this is following the change order discussion that Public Works Director Zeroff had about the Lift Station One, and he asked me to come and give you an update on the progress of, of this construction project. And so, I'll just step through this project, starting with a little bit of an overview of the progress, and then where we're at with the contract, with the contractor. So, taking a look at our wastewater collection system map, back during the comprehensive planning, we did a lot of work on how can the city's wastewater system be expanded for growth. All the green highlighted areas are, are infrastructure that, improvements that were installed for that growth. During that same time, we also identified projects within the city's existing wastewater collection system that were under capacity and needed some upgrades, and those are still showing in red there, and one of them is circled there in the yellow circle. That's Lift Station One. Lift Station One serves a decent size, or decent portion of western and southern Dickinson, so it's a very important piece of the wastewater collection system infrastructure for the city. I'm going to show you a lot of pictures, talk about the, the challenges with this construction project. CC Steel was the low-bid contractor. The project was bid last spring. They didn't start construction until October of 2019 due to a lot of delays in their other projects. They just weren't able to get here and start on this project until October. This is a picture of the old lift station. We presented in May, or in January of 2019, we talked about this, this particular project as part of the facility plan update, and we, we looked hard at this, at this facility in terms of, was this a total reconstruction, or could we rehabilitate this existing lift station and try and use some of the pieces of this lift station? And in 2016 and 2017, we did an inspection of this wet well. This particular lift station has a forty-five-foot-deep wet well, so the existing pumps are forty-five feet down in the ground, below, below the ground elevation here. And that inspection turned out to be good. The wet well is in decent condition yet, to the point where we could rehab it and use that piece of the infrastructure, rather than completely starting over and moving this lift station off-site, or a little bit adjacent to the existing one, when we built the new one. The other thing that we looked at with this lift station was some of the collection system manholes or siphon vaults coming into this lift station. This is an aerial picture taken a couple weeks ago. Here's the, here's the new lift station being rehabbed. These yellow pipes bring the flows from the south and from the west into this lift station. Both of these siphon vaults were in really tough condition, and they needed to be rehabbed or replaced at the same time. The flow passes underneath the Hart River in what we call a siphon. It's a pipe that's, that's laid underneath the river. The first, the first difficult thing that this contractor did is he has to bypass the flows from around this south siphon vault in order to rehab, rehab this vault. He successfully did that under, under winter conditions, and then he moved into the Phase Two bypass, which continued to bypass the south vault and the north vault at the same time. These bypass systems are very, very important because the contractor has to maintain service, just like the lift station is, during all times of construction. This is a picture of that setup. There's two pumps there in blue. One is the primary pump, second is the backup. In winter conditions, they have to heat the piping at all times. They have dialers on these systems that call people when, when high-level alarms happen. So, this is the contractor's system now. The contractor's responsible for this. It was a very difficult bypass, but they successfully completed the, the Phase Two bypass so they could replace the north siphon vault. When those siphon vaults were rehabbed and replaced, then they moved into Phase Three bypass, which is bypassing the lift station during the rehab of the lift station itself. And, and the contractor was pretty innovative. He actually moved the existing pumps from the old wet well in the lift station down into this new north siphon vault. And along with that, he, he brought in a temporary electrical service into a portable storage unit there and moved the pump controls from the old lift station into this storage unit, so that the, the lift station is being bypassed with the old, the old pumps from the lift, from Lift Station One right now. And it's been working very well. This is a long bypass to rehab this lift station, and, and it's going quite well right now. Of course, it's winter conditions, so all this piping here is, is being heated at all times when we were in the middle of the winter, and then here's a secondary pump there in case something happens to this electrical pump system within the siphon vault. There's some pictures of construction. The upper left is the siphon vault on the north side of the river going in. The contractor worked long hours when they were putting critical infrastructure pieces in. This was well into the evening here. You can see that, that it's a dark condition with spotlights on, on the hole there. Photo on the lower right is the new lift station footings. The rectangular structure is the valve vault, the new valve vault that was placed, and that round structure is that wet well that I was talking about that was rehabbed. That's the existing concrete wet well with a new cover on it. And that wet well, like I said, was, is very deep, and the concrete was in decent enough condition so we could rehab it. We talk about rehabbing concrete. The first thing we need to do is, the contractor needs to sandblast all the loose particles of that concrete off, and what's causing that corrosion is H2S gases within our wastewater's collection system. The picture on the left is the south, south siphon vault. The one on the right is the wet well itself down in the bottom. And all the loose material is sandblasted off down to good material, and then they start applying a mortar back onto that surface to rebuild it. And then they eventually apply two different coatings that protects this concrete from corrosion in the future. This is the new, newly-coated surface down in that wet well that you're seeing in those two photos. Challenge, one of the other challenges is actually getting in this wet well. The left photo is before the piping was all pulled out. Photo on the right is a scaffolding system down to the bottom of this wet well that the contractor's been working in for well over a month and a half now, doing the rehab of the wet well itself. And then finally, we're out of the ground here with this picture. This is the, the framing of the, of the new lift station, and it's pretty well enclosed in now. The contractor's working inside, and his subcontractors will be coming in to do electrical. Electrical is the main subcontractor to, to finish up some things on the inside, and the siding will be finished up, and then we'll, we'll move into startup here in the next month or so. Substantial completion is the middle of April, the final June 29th. Contractor's on schedule. About fifty-four percent has been paid to the contractor. There's some outstanding progress payments coming from the contractor that'll ramp that up. There's been a lot of work done in the last few weeks, and then with the change order that Gary present, or Public Works Director Gary, or Zeroff presented tonight, we're at a thousand dollars for change orders total on this project to date. And just to let you, to remind you, this project is being funded with an SRF loan that was approved last July by the state, and staff is receiving progress payments on, on that loan as the contractor progresses through the project. So, that's a quick update. I'd be happy to try and answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Schneider?
Quite a project, yeah.
Yeah, quite the project. Thanks for the update.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Okay, we'll move into planning. Planning Director Hadley, you have annexation for the Evangelical Bible Church Edition.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President and commission members. It's kind of a housekeeping item. When we did the EBC addition, you probably remember that name, the legal was incorrect on the annexation part of the, the part that we annexed this time. It had a long history of annexations in the past and legal descriptions, and those were jumbled together, and unfortunately, that first resolution that we did didn't just annex the portion that we were annexing, it annexed a portion that we had already annexed. So, is a little bit of an issue for title folks. So, this particular resolution, which would be 08-2020, has a corrected annexation legal for the 3.5 acres that we annexed with the EBC addition, and the EBC addition actually clarified and combined all of the past annexations and properties that the church owned into this one particular... that the church owned into this one particular parcel. And that's why it was called EBC. It's actually part of, part of the Country Oaks Edition. And like I said, I think I said it was 3.5 acres, it's 3.09 acres that we're annexing. Anyway, staff would recommend that we approve this Resolution 08-2020 for the EBC addition and for the annexation that corresponded with that. Legal staff has obviously been involved and prepared this resolution. The engineering has also been on board and in favor of this resolution. Any questions?
Any questions for Mr. Hadley? And this is Resolution 08-2020.
Move to approve.
Have a motion to approve by Commissioner Steiner.
Second.
And a second by Commissioner Trustum. Any further discussion, questions? Hearing none will vote. Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mrs. Trustum?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Hadley. Next item up, we have a building code enforcement, or the Building Department Year-end Report by Building Official Schwinn. Welcome.
Thank you, President Decker, Commissioners. What you have in front of you is the Year-end Report, December 2019. Building Department, codes Department City of Dickinson had a productive year. We came in on the commercial side ahead of the previous year, fifteen to six permits. Residential, single-family structures, sixty-two compared to the fifty-six to the prior year. With those numbers up, obviously, the values also went up. The single-family is eleven percent as far as new structures compared to the previous year. Alterations were down a little bit on the commercial side, as you see in the slide. As far as permits as a whole, with more buildings going up, the inspections and other permits go up. As you see, six thirty-seven to date, the end of December, to five thirty-eight. When I say we had a good year, just the permit fees for the billing permit side of it, we're at four hundred and fifteen thousand compared to one ninety-seven the year prior. And overall, we do collect other fees for other departments. Connection fees are obviously up. Right at the end there, you can see our total's at seven hundred and ninety-five compared to the four fifty-eight of the previous year. With that said, I'd like to say that the Building Department did come in under budget. We did have a staff member leave prior to the end of the year. We did encumber thirty-five thousand dollars in order to help address some of the buildings in Dickinson that are, need to be torn down. So that actually encumbered for this year. To date, actually today, I know this isn't on the report, but already this year has kicked off, we're already at eight single-family homes. We're working on a number of commercial permits. Last year at this time, we were at six residential houses. I'd like to actually, at this time, introduce, we did hire a Building Inspector One position, Mr. Blaine Ducart. We hired him on February 3rd. If you want to come up, he can say a little bit about himself. I'm glad to have him on board.
Commissioners and ladies and gentlemen, my name's Blaine Ducart. My background in Dickinson's, thirty-four years of building custom church furniture and church furniture in general for residential homes. In the last five years, I've been remodeling and building new homes, and happy to start a new phase. So, I dived right in, went on six inspections the first day. Leonard's kind of a taskmaster, but I think I'll be able to handle it. So I'm making myself at home here.
All right, welcome aboard.
Welcome.
Mr. President. Mr. Schwinn, I got a question. Sixty-two single-family dwellings, that's great. You know, in prior years, we would know where those were all being built. Are any of those new family dwellings put in infill lots within the city now?
Some of them are, actually. Last year, Mr. Frederick infilled just north here, a block, a brand-new house.
Second Avenue East, we put a house downtown.
But, I mean, there were some vacant lots, and I'm starting to see some newer homes in those, so I wonder if we aren't seeing.
And actually, to the northeast, Venture Homes did, I believe, put one in, right north of the library also. Another infill lot, lot's been empty for years.
So they must be getting those lots fairly reasonable compared to a new lot on State or something, huh?
It was a.
I mean, that's all good.
It was a custom home, and the guy already owned the lot for years, but yeah, that was similar, but.
It's all good.
Yeah.
Well, hopefully, we'll see some of this, some of these empty portions of town that were plotted at one time, come back to us and start filling them up.
First time in twenty years I've built a house in the downtown district. So, it happens once in a while, but, yeah, it's good to see that it was sitting there empty, that we filled it in, so.
Any other questions for Mr. Schwinn? All right, thank you. And that is it for items on the city's agenda. I would ask if there are any citizens that have public issues of city concern not on the agenda, wish to come forward, please come forward, state your name, and let the city commission know your concern. Anyone from the city? Anyone have public issues of city concern not on the agenda? And I'll close the public issues portion of tonight's meeting. The one thing I will say right now as we go into the commission thing, this is, that portion of our meeting here is where I always encourage people to come. When they have a chief complaint, I encourage them to come. Rather than sit on the phone with one of us, I encourage them to come here and let all of us hear it. So, hopefully, that'll continue to happen. Commissioners, do you have anything that you wish to speak to that was not on the agenda? I have two items. One, what's our disposition on the, right now with the bank? I think you kind of gave me an update, but I wanted to make sure that the rest of the Commissioners had an update on the bank agreement.
Yes, thank you, President Decker. That was a question that came up from Commissioner Trustum the other day. As you remember, we sent over a draft, you as a commission approved the draft. They had to do some discussions and revisions. They sent it out to their attorney, who actually drastically changed both documents. I don't think the substance, at least the substance of the purchase agreement was not any different, it was just quite a little bit different. Also, Ms. Winkleveld, when she was reviewing it, found some concerns with legal descriptions, really, that were linked a lot to the bank having different names over the years and purchasing different properties at different times. That's all been reviewed and worked out, so we believe the purchase agreement will need to be reapproved by the commission, but is the same. We did receive recently the MOU back in a quite a little bit different format, and I think with some different terms to it. And so I, that's something that has been tabled a little bit in the last week. It was a priority until the virus came up, but that's something that I want to review with you and discuss with the bank a little bit. Just clarify where we were in a few things, but I don't think it alters anything as far as moving forward. I think we just need to clarify who owns what and who's responsible for what. But that all looks very positive.
Okay. And to that point, Commissioners, we all know the city of Dickinson, there is a challenge with childcare. We've had discussions, myself, Vice President Frederick, Mr. Gaw, Mrs. Carlson, if we would entertain the option possibly, it was actually brought up by Mr. Frederick, of we just pay the full value for their building and maintain this building, and maybe we offer this building as an incentive to somebody for childcare. Because that is a challenge. That's something to think about, Commissioners. We're going to have to start doing things like other cities. We have to step up. Watford City stepped up, they put a bunch of money into childcare. We might have to do the same thing. I mean, I have mentioned that in the past. Once the acreage on the south side of Dickinson, we planned that out. I always thought that would be a great spot to offer up some acres out there for possibly somebody to build a building, but we have a perfectly good building here, too, that might work. We don't know what their intentions are, though, to do with it. So, just something to entertain. My other item is, last meeting, we had a citizen come forward with some road issues. His road is somewhat unique and challenged. City's doing its best to make it passable. I know that Public Works is working hard on it. But his road is not a loan. And Mr. Kubis did leave. The one thing that, I guess I would ask, the engineering and Public Works, there are multiple roads within the city, that at one time, there was a deal done with them. And the roads in some of these areas are not passable. Two come to mind right away, the one right in front of Mr. Flex's place and the one by Midwest Doors. And we want to make public safety our main concern. And if there's something happening, say at Midwest Doors, if they tried to get a firetruck in there, it would be almost impossible when it's soft like it is. And there, and I'm sure Mr. Frederick, he can point out two or three other roads in town, and all of you could. You know, we know some of these roads. I think we need to have a plan as commission, what we're going to do with them.
Yeah, I mean, we've just, as a city, made some errors in judgment, letting some of these structures get built without the improvements being put in. And I don't think we do that anymore, but we definitely need to look at addressing them. I mean, the Midwest Doors one last year, I mean, it almost sunk my pickup driving in there. It was awful, so.
And I'm sure Public Works, their solid waste division could probably give us a whole laundry list of roads that they have issues with. So, I think it's something that we need to address, and with budget season coming up, look at that, what we're going to do.
Mr. President, just to touch on your comments about potentially holding this building and using it for daycare, finding someone that's interested. You know, I'm a huge proponent of finding answers to the daycare issues within this community, but that was a large part of the decision that was made to take on the American Insurance Building, was to not have this one. You know, that would be also a significant investment in this building that's already valued at, what, one point four, we estimated? And they would have to come in and refurbish this entire building. I think maybe the conversation is to be investing more in that development with Stark Development Corporation does. Maybe we need to visit more with their board on that daycare program that they have, because they do provide a great resource to daycares that are looking to expand or start within our community. I don't know that preserving this building and trying to find a champion to come in and lead that charge, that's a huge undertaking, and I'm just not sure that that's, you know, I'm all.
I just threw it out there.
And I'm just throwing out that comment as well.
And that's what I wanted to have the discussion. So, I mean, I'm perfectly good with the, you know, it was just brought up in the discussion we're having, and I'm perfectly fine with the agreement we have with them now. But I just, it's an option. So, but I'm fine with the MOU that's going to be signed and our purchase agreement, once all the legals work out, so. Anything else, Commissioners?
Well, I was just going to say, to your comment, you know, maybe we do need to visit with Stark Development Corporation again on that program and what we can do to enhance it.
Well, their budget, I mean, their contract's coming up, too. So, I think their role in our community has changed a lot. And I see them stepping up to help fulfill some of the stuff with the census, workforce, childcare. Their role is changing, which I'm glad to see, so.
They're doing a great job.
Yep. Anyone else? Right. Okay, anything else, Commissioners?
No.
Look for a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second.
We are adjourned.